We're waiting to call the board's member, Spillstone.
We've been following my third plus year old son all the time. He was at Spillstone at the dinner table.
I don't know how he comes up to this.
My job, my mother would say, dinner can't be over yet. Melissa Anne has an upsetting evening.
So question, Stan needs to mop up water, so we'll get started here in a second. He's got, Stan's got a lake over here in front of him.
Did you notice that? The one we did at our feet started a little late, so it didn't quite capture the, I mean, it got it, but it didn't quite capture the coming in part.
Don't get yourself a lucky Judith. There's something under there. Under there.
Where?
Right there, can you see it?
It's your fault. I can't believe I spilled that.
Yeah, it's a big river, please.
That's yours.
Oh, I thought it was yours, it's not mine, okay.
All right.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Rhonda. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We do have all members present, and I declare a quorum. This evening, we have a young lady who is a grade five student at Sharpsburg Elementary, Lily Burgess, and Lily's here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Lily?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lily, thank you for being here this evening. Do you have someone with you that you would like to introduce to us? Do you want to stand up at the microphone, honey, so we can hear you?
My mom, my dad, my sister, my two brothers, and my principal.
And your principal's name?
Mr. Allshouse.
Mr. Allshouse. Well, thank you all for being here in support of Lily this evening. Lily, as a fifth grader at Sharpsburg, what wonderful things can you tell us about your school?
It's a really nice school because you get to learn a lot and have fun.
And what do you enjoy learning about the most?
Science.
Science? Any particular area of science? Just everything about science, great. And do you have hobbies?
I play softball.
You play softball? What position?
Catcher.
Awesome, awesome. And when you're not playing softball, what do you like to do in your spare time?
Sometimes I go outside and play.
Just free play?
Yeah.
Just, yeah, don't hear that very often. So much is organized these days, we don't hear about children going out and just having free play, playing anything they want. Well, I thank you for being here. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions that they would like to ask you. Anyone have a question for Lily?
You seem to ask them all.
Oh, I ask them all, okay, well, there you go. Lily, thank you again for being here. Okay, our first item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Somebody.
Okay, Mr. Stelfa has moved for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. We'll move, oh, we'll move to the vote then. All those in favor of approval of the agenda? All right, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, October 16th, 2018.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Okay, all those in favor of accepting those minutes? Okay, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs.
Madam President, I move for the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 16th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to the closed meeting minutes? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Is it unanimous if you were here?
Well, it was unanimous for those who voted, so it would be six to zero for both sets of minutes. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Gesford?
Yes, I have one more motion for the approval of the business minutes dated Tuesday, October 16th, 2018.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any addition or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor? Okay, six, one abstaining, and the student member concurs. We'll move next to the superintendent's report. We are going to have the superintendent's report this evening in two parts. We have two matters before new business, so Dr. Michael will turn things over to you.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to first, first to do is, this week is American Education Week, and I certainly want to thank on behalf of staff, I think I can have, thank on behalf of the Board of Education, our ESP staff, our administrators, our teachers, for all the work that they do in helping our students strive and move forward in their student learning and preparing them for the future. So as part of American Education Week, we want to thank them. Also, this week is School Psychology Awareness Week. Last week, we hosted the Western Regional Psychologists, so we had psychologists here from Allegheny, Garrett, Washington, Frederick and Carroll, I believe. This is a picture of our psychologists here in Washington County. They do a great job, they work with their children, prepare them emotionally, so they can learn and provide a variety of supports to special ed students as well. So I want to recognize them and thank them for their hard work, they have done very challenging work, so we appreciate it again, our ESP, our administrators, our teachers, our psychologists, as it's, again, School Psychology Awareness Week. We have a teacher to honor tonight, and I think that's fitting as part of American Education Week, and following that, we have a short presentation regarding our National Education Support Professionals Day. So at this time, I'd like to invite Michelle Harmon to come forward. She's going to introduce our guests, a winner of a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science and Teaching, and go ahead and come forward, Mr. Weber. And then we're going to ask, after Michelle does her presentation, gives a little information, we're going to ask them to drop to the front row, and I'm going to ask that Terry come forward, and our educational rep, educational personnel representatives come forward. We'll introduce that topic, and then I'm going to invite the board to go down. We have certificates for our guests. So, Michelle.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Michael. I am here to share with you the exciting news that we have finalists again for the Presidential Awards in Mathematics and Science Teaching. These are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. The awards were established by Congress in 1983. The president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. The applicants are evaluated using the five dimensions of outstanding teaching: mastery of content appropriate to grade level, use of effective instructional methods and strategies, effective use of student assessments, reflective practice and lifelong learning, leadership in education inside and outside the classroom. Three finalists were selected by the state of Maryland, and those three finalists will now move on to selection at the national level, and we will find out, they're two years behind in selection, so the 2016 winners were just announced when we went to the recognition dinner for Mr. Weber. Each Presidential Award, awardee receives a certificate signed by the President of the United States and a 10,000 award from NSF. Awardees are honored at an award ceremony that takes place in DC. This year, Raymond Weber of Salem Elementary is one of three Maryland finalists for the 2018 PAE MST Award. He was honored at the MCTM banquet on October 17th at Mount Washington Conference Center in Baltimore. He's been a fifth grade teacher at Salem since 2010. He's a graduate with a bachelor's degree from Shepherd University and continued his masters at West Virginia University. He's active in professional development, 24-game competition, destination imagination, and Salem's Cool and Courteous Gentlemen's Club that focuses on transforming young males into gentlemen. Mr. Weber was nominated by his principal, Mr. Thomas Garner, who's here with us this evening. He recommended Raymond based upon a number of outstanding accomplishments, among which are the following: high park data, highest in the school, one of the highest in the county; holding high expectations for all students; using formative data to guide instruction; providing differentiated classroom structure to meet the needs of all of his students; modeling lifelong learning for his students; demonstrating leadership beyond the classroom; leading the destination imagination team to Worlds three consecutive years; and sweeping county awards at the 24-game competition in consecutive years; and, little-known fact, contestant and winner on the Wheel of Fortune in 2013. Mr. Weber will now await the final decision for the next level of selection. And on behalf of Washington County Public Schools and the math and science team, I congratulate Mr. Weber and wish him the best and continued success in the next stages of selection.
Weber, do you have anything you want to share or comment on?
No, no, Melissa hit it off.
Okay, we're going to invite you just to drop there to the front row, and after our next recognition, you're going to come forward, and the board members will have an opportunity to shake your hand. Our next presentation, again, a recognition of National Education Support Professionals Day.
Good evening. We are here, I'm here this evening, my name is Terry Baker, Director of Human Resources. I'm here with Anne Marie Hines, our President of WCPS, and Sandy Hammond is our Coordinator of Human Resources for our educational support personnel. And as Dr. Michael shared earlier, we're here to celebrate and thank our educational support personnel for all they do. Anne Marie has a few comments, and then I'd like to take, turn our short presentation over to Ms. Hammond.
You'll have to excuse me, with the hazards of the job. We wanted to thank you for recognizing the ESP workers of WCPS. We appreciate the support of our communities and value the trust placed in us working with the students of Washington County, so thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
So this is a time to honor and strengthen and respect the contributions of over one, over 1,100 support staff employees in Washington County Public Schools. Who are our ESP staff? They are essential members of the education team, they make a difference in ensuring that every student receives a quality education, and they work behind the scenes to support student success and help make our schools function. Today, we want to recognize and say thank you to all of our ESP staff, more specifically, our Food and Nutrition Services, Maintenance and Operations, our Transportation Department, and to our nurses, our paraprofessionals, maintenance, already mentioned Maintenance and Operations, Secretaryial and Clerical Staff, and our Center for Education Services Support Staff. At this time, we do want to share a short video with you featuring some of our ESP staff who work hard to put students first in our schools every day.
And I have some other announcements, some other presentations later in the program. Thank you.
Excuse me, we'll move on to public comment. I have no one signed up for that. Is there anyone who hasn't signed up who wishes to come forward? Okay. We have no old business, we'll move to new business, consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Our first item is the donation to North High. Dr. Akers, my apology.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. On behalf of North Hagerstown High School and South Hagerstown High School, I am requesting the board's approval of a generous $15,000 donation from the HUBS Booster Club to North Hagerstown High School to be used toward the purchase of a new electric sign in front of the school, and a generous donation of $5,000 from Best Buy to South Hagerstown High School to benefit the South Hagerstown High School Robotics Team.
Thank you, Dr. Akers, is there a motion?
Thank you for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Mr. Bickford's motion? Okay, if not, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of accepting the donation as presented by Dr. Akers? Okay, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Dr. Akers.
Thank you.
Now we'll do the consent eject. Mr. Beigdell.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have seven items for review and one informational item on an emergency procurement. Excuse me, these items were reviewed by our procurement review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Beigdell, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards and procurements for vehicle parts, supplies, and service to the vendors listed in the exhibit at the unit percentages listed; bulk motor oil and fluids to Holtzman Oil Corporation at the unit prices listed; greenhouse at Hancock Middle Senior High School to GRC General Contractor, Inc., at a cost of $157,802. Greenhouse at Boonsborough High School to Milton Stamper Builders at a cost of $265,200. Servers for Williams Sport Complex to Applied Technology Services at a cost of $190,840. Lightspeed relay web filter to Trebon Company Incorporated at a three-year cost of $336,963.84. And gasoline and diesel fuel deliveries to A.C. and T. Company, Inc., at the unit prices listed.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Beigdell or any discussion? No? Then we'll move for the vote. All those in favor of approving this evening's consent agenda as presented? All those in favor? Unanimous, student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Beigdell. Next item, business, is the adoption of our board's 2019 legislative program, and approval of the Legislative Response Team members, and the Legislative Representative to the 2019 Maryland Legislative Session. Mrs. Arda Cave and Mr. Chata with us this evening. Good evening.
Mrs. Williams, would you like us to offer some comments?
Please, let's talk, if you will, about the legislative program.
The Board of Education conducted a public work session for October 16th, at which time the board had an opportunity to examine its legislative priorities for the 2019 Legislative Session, and also its initiatives and legislative priorities. And I'd like to highlight this evening, the legislative priorities, and I believe the board has before it three proposed motions as we move forward to prepare for the 2019 Legislative Session. The, the three legislative priorities are as follows. The first is to support the urban improvement project partnership, and as you may recall, there were a number of bond bills during the last session, and we supported those bond bills, and they all were passed, and they provided additional financial resources for this particular project. During the upcoming session, we're anticipating additional bond bills that will be introduced, and we will, we will once again be supporting that effort of the passage of those bills. The second is, during our work session, we discussed the reportable offense law, and as you may recall, last session, we did offer legislation to amend the law that would provide local boards of education with additional information when students are enrolled in a public school, in particular, students who are under the care and custody of the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services. And while we were not successful in getting that legislation enacted last session, And while we were not successful in getting that legislation enacted last session, we intend to pursue that once again this year. We will provide a different approach to getting passage in this particular session. And so that'll be the second item that we will be actively pursuing during the 2019 session. The third particular item is we want to seek amendments to the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of 2018. As we've discussed, this particular bill was passed on the very last day of the session. And we believe there's certain provisions in this new law that require further clarification. One of the requirements under the new law is that a local board of education must ensure, and this is along with the local health department and other entities, that a student receives mental health services. We think there's a need to further clarify the role of the local board of education, particularly since the local boards of education in Maryland are really not the lead agency in providing mental health services to students. The second is there's a provision in the bill that local boards provide wraparound services. And once again, many of the services described in that portion of the bill would be services that you would typically expect the Department of Social Services to provide or other governmental agencies. There certainly are some that a local board would provide, that is, providing additional educational support services to students. And finally, the law requires local boards to determine whether there's adequate coverage as far as law enforcement goes at schools. And once again, this is the primary function of your local enforcement agencies to make that determination, not your local board, particularly since law enforcement officers are not employed by a local board of education, but rather by your municipality or by your county government. So those are the three priorities that we will be pursuing. We're glad to expand upon that if you would like.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Trotta regarding the legislative priorities? Do we have a motion regarding legislative priorities this time?
Madam President, I move to approve the Washington County Board of Education's legislative program for the 2019 Maryland Legislative Session as discussed at the work session on October 16th, 2018.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can we hear from Mrs. Cade?
Sure. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and congratulations to those of you all re-elected. And it's very nice to work with all of you. And I look forward to a very complicated and very contentious session coming up. I think that we definitely have been trying to work toward the work on the juvenile services. And just today, I attended Dr. Michael's absence at PZAM, their legislative committee. And the new chairman of the Finance Committee, Senator Kelly from Baltimore County, is a big advocate and has great concerns about juvenile services itself and their schools. And it's a little to the edge of what we're talking about. But they are proposing to do some very heavy study of whether they should be a 25th school system rather than the state board managing the juvenile services schools. But as she described those kids and those kids coming back into communities, it was as if she was advocating for the bill that we will be putting forth. So won't be in her committee, but she certainly can help us a great deal. And there are a lot of other issues. Of course, Kerwin Commission issues are the biggest thing that will be coming forth. But that's a lot of different issues. Paul Pinsky, who chairs the EHEA Committee and is an educator himself, is very focused on the preparation of teachers and the salaries for teachers, that whole component of the Kerwin Commission. Almost all of the speakers, and it was the chairman of all the important education committees and budget committees that were speaking, so it was a pretty heavy crowd. But they all were very interested, of course, in early childhood education. They also were interested in, they spoke about accountability. And I think there's a lot of controversy about what that should mean, what that will mean, and so forth. And of course, then there's the calendar issue as to whether you should be required to start school before, I mean, after Labor Day and by June 15th. And there may be legislation going in on that, although there is a lot of community support for that start date. But Senator Pinsky said that if there was a ground swell and communities, counties, would all support that, he would work very hard with us to accomplish that. There also was, of course, talk about the formulas and how any of all, any and all of these great ideas that are coming forth are going to be paid for. And there was even the prediction that there won't even in this session reach a consensus on a new funding formula, that it may take longer than that. But there is huge commitment and there's huge concern about how to finance. But there's certainly a, I think, an intention to bring the whole public to understand the real needs that the Kerwin Commission has perceived of as needed to make our statewide school systems world-class systems. So it was a very interesting session and I was very happy that I was able to attend it. And I'm happy to share any more ideas with you.
Thank you. Any further questions or any discussion?
When will the Kerwin materials be presented? Do you have any idea yet or is it still?
It's still maybe, I think they still talked about like eight weeks out maybe. They were having big meetings today. They were having big, you know, Kerwin himself was coming to speak at the time that I had to leave. So the timing, I'm not positive about. But it's not probably going to be before the session gets started. So there's going to be a sudden push and shove to try and put it all into legislation.
Is there any conversation? When is it, two years from now that Labor Day is like September 7th?
It's not even that far. I think it's, I don't know.
Two years after.
Yes, that was brought up, on the calendar issue, that, yeah, the year, whether it's 19 or 20, that Labor Day is not until the 7th of September, which means you can't start until the 8th of September, which is what, three weeks at least later than you used to start? And that this was, there are many school systems that are concerned about this.
I would think so because, I mean, we're looking at, you know, not being finished until, I mean, originally, the mindset was start before Labor Day, finish by June 15th. And all of a sudden, that's kind of slipping farther away. And it's almost like a bait and switch, you know? Everybody went along with the Labor Day start. And now our people are going to be going until the 21st, 22nd, 23rd of June. That's, I mean, I have a lot of problems with that. That's...
Well, I think the educators were pretty strongly opposed to that executive order. And there's a question even that Senator Pinsky suggested that whether or not that even was a legal executive order and whether the governor has a right to an executive order that affects a department that is not totally under the governor. So that was mentioned as well today. It was pretty lively.
I can imagine. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion before us is approval of our legislative program for the 2019 Maryland Legislative Session as it was discussed in the work session on October 16th, 2018. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. So we have an approved legislative program and that's a very good thing. So the next thing is to move on to the appointments of the Legislative Response Team for this year. My notes tell me that the works, the result of the work session discussion was that the members of the team would be myself as board president, Mr. Stan Stauffer as board vice president, Mrs. Linda Murray, board member, Dr. Michael as superintendent, Mr. Trotta as chief legal counsel, and Mrs. Cade as legislative representative. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the appointments to the Legislative Response Team.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go on the motion made by Mr. Bickford to approve the appointments to the Legislative Response Team.
No, no, sorry. I'm holding your hand. I'm just always in a hurry to...
All those in favor of the motion is made by Mr. Bickford. We're unanimous and the student member concurs. Okay, our next item of business is to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as our legislative representative.
Madam President, I move to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as the Washington County Board of Education's Legislative Representative.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion, any questions? All those in favor of the appointment of Mrs. Cade as Washington County Board of Education? As Mrs...
You're good.
(laughing) The approval of the appointment of Mrs. Artith Cade as Washington County Board of Education's Legislative Representative. Thank you. Unanimous. Student member concurs. Congratulations. It's such a pleasure to have you with us, helping us again.
It's my pleasure as well.
Okay, I think that takes care of that item of business. Thank you, Mr. Trotta.
Not going anywhere, right?
You're not going anywhere. You're up for the next agenda item, which happens to be the first reading of proposed changes to Policy DJ Purchasing Standards.
Thank you. Section 5-112, the education article, the annotated code of Maryland, requires every local board of education in Maryland to seek competitive bids whenever it expects the cost of any school building, improvement to a building, supplies, or equipment to exceed the cost of $25,000. This same section also states if the amount specified in Section 5-112 of the state finance article differs from the amount that is in Section 5-112 of the education article, that the amount in the state finance article shall prevail. The state recently changed the threshold amount in the financial article to $50,000. We've discussed this change in the law with the policy committee meeting, with the policy committee. And the policy committee is recommending the following changes to this particular policy. First, that Policy DJ, which is entitled Purchasing Standards, be amended to reflect the change in the law from the $25,000 amount to the $50,000 amount. Secondly, that the policy be placed in the standard format. And finally, you'll note that there were some minor modifications to the policy that were also recommended. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to Policy DJ, which is entitled Purchasing Standards.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Mrs. Fisher or Mr. Trotta? Any discussion of the policy? No? Okay, all those in favor of the first reading of proposed changes to Policy DJ entitled Purchasing Standards? Okay, we're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you. Mr. Trotta, would you like to continue with the next policy?
Yes. The Policy Committee is undertaking a comprehensive review of Section E of the Policy Manual. The committee reviewed Policy ECB entitled Use of School Facilities Signs and determined that the policy is not aligned with Administrator Regulation KG-R, which is entitled Washington County Public Schools' Information for Applicants Using School Facilities. The committee is recommending that Policy ECB be updated to align with the Administrator Regulation and that it also be placed in the standard format. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to Policy ECB, which is entitled Use of School Facilities Signs.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stauffer.
No, it's Mr. Reidner.
Oh, it's Mr. Reidner? I'm sorry. Mr. Reidner, for your second. Is there any discussion or questions for Mrs. Fisher or Mr. Trotta? Mr. Gessford?
This evening I took a phone call from K. Rebucci from the Elections Board. And I asked her the time that the state allows signage to be put out. And she indicated to me that the state has a 5:00 the night before the election and an 8:00 a.m. the day after the election. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't get on the same page as those because ours says it's 7:00 p.m. the eve of the election and then 6:00 a.m. on the following day after the election. She actually gave me the article for us to take a look at. So just for reference, Article 3310-101A332. That's their standard that they go by. So I'm just kind of wondering why we have something different if they're going to supersede us anyway.
Mrs. Fisher, without seeing the item that Mr. Gessford's referring to, I am thinking that that state policy is for the placement of signs on state property, whereas schools have their own times because of students being on campus. But I have not seen the actual regulation.
I would share with you that when we initially adopted these timeframes, and I want to say this is probably three or four years ago, that we did work with the local board of elections and shared this information with them. And then most recently, when the Policy Committee considered this, we also had sent the same information to the local board of elections to let them know that the board would be considering potential changes to its policy on this. We're actually aligning it with our regulation. So what I will do, we will follow up with them, number one. We'll make some determination as to whether the state law does in fact preempt the local board's authority, particularly since it's school system property. It's not owned by the state of Maryland. It's property that's owned by the local board. But we certainly will research that further. The Policy Committee is meeting on the 28th...
27th?
29th. And so we'll add this particular item to the agenda. Thank you.
And then I just had one more follow-up on that. I had a question about signage.
Before you go... On to that. Could I ask my question? When I look at under Policy Statement B, the, next to the last sentence, says all political signage shall comply with state and federal laws and regulations and any rules established by the Washington County Board of Elections and Superintendent. So that kind of says to me that those things have to align, that our times have to be the same as what...
Not necessarily. You have to, it's the legal doctrine of preemption. And that is whether, different, whether it's at the federal level and the state government passes a law, would that interfere with the, has the federal government preempted a particular area of the law? So I have to really examine whether there's what they call expressed preemption, that is, whether the state law says this applies to all property where election activity takes... where election activity takes place.
I just think it would be very confusing to a candidate to get one set of information from the Board of Elections and then not knowing that there would be an existing board policy that would be different than that.
I have to study whether there is in fact some difference.
Mrs. Fisher?
Having just gone through an election, when I signed up, I was given three distinct, different sets of papers. One had the state laws on it for signage, one was the county, and I believe the city was on there also. And then, of course, we have our own school. So I don't see, if you're giving all three papers, I don't see how there's confusion.
They did give you the Board of Education policy as well?
Yeah.
It's good to know.
I was just going to say, I've run twice, and both times I was told at polling places, you couldn't put signs out before 7:00 o'clock at night. So I don't know.
We'll try to reconcile the conflicting information.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gessford, you had something else?
Another question is, do we have signage? And I kind of went around and took some pictures of advertisements on school properties. I noticed South High sells signage. Is that going to affect them raising funds for a purpose, this change?
This does not apply at all to advertising on school property. So it's completely separate and distinct policy.
Okay, because I know someone kind of rely on that, so I don't want to...
Yeah, what this policy governs is occasionally there are groups that use school system property. So they might use it on a Saturday or a Sunday or in the evening. And this provides parameters for them placing signage on the property. And then it also applies to election activity. And that is what this particular policy is restricted to.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to the vote. The vote is to approve the first reading of proposed changes to Policy ECB entitled Use of School Facilities Signs. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. That is the end of our new business. That brings us back to the second half of the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Just a couple announcements before I have some reports from a number of staff members that I hope the board finds informative. We had the We the People competition here in the building today as part of American Education Week. It was exciting to have the students here and sharing their knowledge of the Constitution. The winners this year, Moonsboro High School was first place, South High was second place, and Williamsport was third place. The judges had an opportunity to spend a few minutes with them. Very, very impressed with the knowledge and abilities of our students. And I just congratulate all the teams that participated today. And our winners will go on to other competitions. I think the first-place winner moves ahead to state competition at this point. But again, there were state representatives here. They were impressed with the talents of our students. And while we've mentioned ESP and administrators and teachers, I think it's important during American Education Week we mention our students as well. Just another announcement, report cards. We've reached that time when they're going to be available. Already in parent view, report cards should be available for middle and high school students as of November 12. Those should be available. Printed report cards for middle and high school will be available for students to take home on November 16. In elementary, on parent view, student view, by 1:00 on November 14. Is that today or tomorrow? Tomorrow, they will be available, and printed report cards will be available to take home on November 20. And we're going to have a presentation on apprenticeships in a few minutes, but this is also National Apprenticeship Week. And we've, we had some recognition at the county level, and let's stay sure about that. But our first presentation this evening will be regarding our new welcome center for our English language learners. And I'll invite our guests to come forward, introduce themselves, and share a little bit about our welcome center.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. Ms. Vanegas and I are excited to share information with you tonight about the new WCPS International Welcome Center. In December of 2017, the Washington County Board of Ed Ad Hoc Committee on Diversity made the recommendation to create an international welcome center in order to, one, engage community partners and families to celebrate the value of all cultures and remove barriers to resources; two, create a welcoming, safe, and inclusive environment through education and international inclusive practices; and, three, ensure systemic equity and access to early, extended, advanced, and a broad range of opportunities. In April of 2018, WCPS submitted a proposal for the Maryland Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant. And in June of 2018, the grant was awarded to Washington County Public Schools. The activities of the grant supported the Diversity Committee's recommendation of creating an international welcome center staffed by an English learner community liaison. Strategies and activities within the Striving Readers Comprehensive Grant are to engage families and community partners in collaborative efforts to support the populations of early learners, economically diverse learners, and English learners. From spring through summer, the EL department worked closely with pupil personnel workers, registrars, the supervisor of student services, counselors, and school administrators to collaboratively develop an implementation plan. Here are some pictures of our new international welcome center located at Pangborn Elementary. Pangborn was chosen because it is centrally located in downtown Hagerstown, where a large number of our English learners live. Pangborn also has the largest number of ELs of any Washington County public school, and the school's location provides easy access to public transportation. August 27 of 2018, Ms. Vanegas started working as the EL community liaison. She began shadowing pupil personnel workers, school registrars, and EL teachers to learn more about how she could provide support to schools and staff. She then met with every single registrar at every school in the county to refine roles and responsibilities while building relationships and gaining feedback on how to improve the implementation plan. To engage with community partners, Ms. Vanegas collaborated with Washington County Social Workers Alliance, Hagerstown Community College, Vester Community of Hope, the hub at University System of Maryland-Hagerstown, Metropolitan Area Foreign Student Advisory, and the International Office of Frederick County Public Schools. And then with great excitement, the International Welcome Center made its big debut on October 1st.
Good evening. I am Sonia Vanegas, and I have taught French and Spanish in WCPS in addition to tutoring ELs in multiple schools in kindergarten through 12th grade. I was born in El Salvador, which is also home to the vast majority of WCPS Spanish speakers born outside of the United States. When I first attended school in the United States, I was an English learner who did not know any English. I am a native speaker of English and Spanish, which represents the majority language spoken by WCPS English learners. I'm also proficient in French, the second most commonly spoken language in WCPS. As the new EL community liaison, I hope to provide families with the assistance that I wish my parents would have had when my siblings and I were growing up. Every family should have access to information in their home language to be able to make relevant decisions about their child's education. Ultimately, I'd like to help new families excel in our schools and in our community. The International Welcome Center has various goals. First, to provide pre-enrollment language to families and schools and personalize support to families new to WCPS. Second, research language and American schooling history, administer English learner eligibility testing, and develop an individualized EL LAU plan based on students' language strengths and needs. This will greatly support English learner teachers so they can focus more on instruction and student goals. And finally, to connect families with resources from the school and the community. WCPS recommends referring families to the International Welcome Center when language support is needed, when families state on the home language survey that a language other than English is spoken on two or more questions, when students are enrolling from a non-English-speaking country, and when English learners are enrolling from a Maryland district or out of state. The IWC has supported 60 families and 17 schools as of November 9, 2018. We have provided pre-enrollment language support, hosted a parent cafe in collaboration with Washington County Early Childhood Advisory Council, conducted EL testing and screenings, supported a free and reduced meals audit in Spanish, supported human resources for recruiting Spanish-speaking WCPS applicants, coordinated an EL family night at Eastern Elementary in Ruth N. Monroe Primary Schools, as well as translated WCPS documents and immunization records.
So thank you for letting us share with you a little bit about the International Welcome Center. Many of you have any questions?
Ms. Moore, I think it's fair to say our goal is to try to make a one-stop shop for people new to our area, maybe possibly to our country. And where do you go in Washington County to enroll your elementary child, your middle school child, your high school child? How do you seek services if you don't speak English? You know, so we just want to kind of a consistent, no matter what school you go to, we can direct you to Pangborn, have somebody specialize in the training of how to get people enrolled in the school, get them to the right school, connect them with the right services. So that's our whole concept behind the IWC. A whole new, another initialism and acronym for all of us to start working on at this point. It's the first I've heard it used tonight that way, so that'll be interesting. But we would appreciate any questions or any thoughts that you have about the effort so far. You said, how many families have we served in the last month?
About 60 families in 17 different schools.
So that's a month. So you have really hit the ground running here and have accomplished so very much in one month's time. I'll never remember that acronym. It's IWC?
Yeah, Welcome Center, right?
That I know, but I'll have to think long and hard when someone says IWC because that's a new one. That's a new one for me. I would just like to say thank you. I can't think of anyone, having heard your credentials, I can't think of anyone any better prepared to serve in this position. And I'm just thrilled, thrilled, more than you can imagine, to see this recommendation of the Diversity Ad Hoc Committee and before that, the Diversity Task Force come to realization. I mean, this is something. This is really something. So thank you for the work that you've done thus far, and I'm just excited about what's to come. Anyone else? Did you have something you wanted to say?
She asked, and Dr. Michael asked how many families, and you asked, whatever.
I just wanted to say, it's so nice to meet you today. I was at Pangborn, so I stopped in to see her, and I had heard about the Welcome Center, so I wanted to see it for myself. And you are doing amazing work. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your report. Our next report is about our apprenticeship program here in Washington County. Dr. Pugh and Cody Pine are going to share that information. As the boards are aware, we were selected to be a pilot program a number of years ago. Due to a lot of hard work, Mr. Pine, Dr. Pugh, and others, our apprenticeship program's starting to pick up speed. Excellent opportunity for students to get a taste of the real world and advance their knowledge and preparation for their future. So, Dr. Pugh?
Thank you. We actually had the opportunity this morning to be part of a proclamation with the Washington County Board of Commissioners, and they recognized the week as apprenticeship week. And our role in that is youth apprenticeship. And we were combining efforts in that they hired their first youth apprenticeship, Colleen White, a senior from South Hagerstown High School for the Washington County Division of Environmental Management. So she had high credentials with all of her sciences and all of her background, and she met her whole support team this morning. All of the people will be mentoring and helping her be successful in that position. So we're thankful to provide you today with a brief update on where we are with youth apprenticeship, including some information about last year and then where we are this year.
So the youth apprenticeship model is different than traditional work-based learning models. In this model, we work with the Department of Licensing and Labor and Registration, and we partner with them. The DLLR folks identify the business, the careers, the jobs that the businesses are in need of, mainly because the workforce in almost every career cluster is aging out. So, and then, once we find that business and that need, our youth apprenticeship coordinator then works with counselors to find the right student, the right fit for that position. Once the student takes that position, it's a paid position. Once the student takes that position, then the business mentors that student and the skill set that it requires with the hopes that the business will retain a lifelong employee and the student will find a gainful career. We also, upon completion, the student will have a CTE.
And this morning, our WCPS apprenticeship coordinator is Ms. Wendy Moore. And this morning, they recognized her efforts and us as her staff, so that was nice. She does a lot of the work. If you look at our first year, these are the partner businesses. This was a boots-on-the-ground, go talk to these individual business people and help them understand that this is a great opportunity for workforce development and opportunity for our students to learn about local opportunities for employment. Last year, we had 15 apprenticeship placements, which beat Frederick County, which was a small goal of mine. And it included six juniors, nine seniors. We did have over 50 applications for the 19 open positions. And the businesses that you see here continue to be partners this year.
Student outreach. Our apprenticeship coordinator does a lot of work, mainly through the counselors. And I have to give the counselors a big thank you because they play a big role in this with the help of identification of students. But the apprenticeship coordinator, as you can see on the slide, creates the flyers, the handouts, the social media correspondence, such as the smore, which goes out bi-weekly or monthly, and connects students, counselors, administrators, parents, businesses together, along with DLLR staff. So we're extremely thankful for the work that everyone's doing for outreach.
Program completion is another statistics that we're very proud of. Last year, we had nine seniors and one early graduate junior who finished the hours, the 450 hours of paid work. Eight of those seniors completed all of them, all of their program requirements, and received their skills certificate. And as of August 31, all of those 10 students had been retained in their place of employment. So we put the pressure on the Board of County Commissioners for the environmental waste management position and said we're at 100% retention rate, so we need to make this work for our new young lady. The gentleman that you see in the picture here is Casey Kelly. He was one of our very first apprenticeships, worked with Beacon Grace at HCC, which is a supply chain startup company. And he was selected by the state of Maryland to serve as a youth apprenticeship ambassador. So he's actually going down on Thursday and will be recognized by Secretary Schultz and the governor's Workforce Development Task Force. And then his job as part of his continuing employment with Beacon Grace would be to advocate to other counties as they're expanding this model beyond Washington County and Frederick County.
So some long-term outcomes. We obviously want to make students aware of what careers are in their own backyard because we really do have a lot of great businesses, a lot of great career opportunities that exist here in Washington County. And this program is meant to help students see and identify with businesses what jobs and programs are available. Because, again, our workforce is, a lot of them in each career cluster are aging out, and we need qualified workers to fill those positions. We are also using this as an opportunity to educate businesses on what Washington County Public Schools have to offer because we've really been doing a good job, in my opinion, of educating businesses of, you know, how great of a job we do in preparing students for careers, for futuristic careers, and just all the potential possibilities that are out there. and just all the potential possibilities that are out there.
So, through these partnerships, we've actually learned a lot about our community, about the needs that we have. We participate in Manufacturing Roundtable, a number of other professional advisory committees. And that's really strengthened our business partnerships because now they know a single point of contact of who to call if they're interested in youth apprenticeships. We're also engaging community organizations. We presented to leadership Washington County and let them know how they could support the continued development of our students seeking a career path that, in the trades, or a non-traditional path, that could actually keep them here in Washington County and provide a living wage. This has been a successful model. I think initially, they hoped to have sixty apprentices. But we found to make the correct match between the business and the young person really does take a lot of work to make sure that that partnership is going to be effective for both groups.
On the screen, you'll see some actual literature, some correspondence, some flyers that were created to show not only the counselors and students and parents what's available, but to also show the businesses that we are truly invested in the program and we are willing to put out there the information that they give us. And we've certainly received kudos many times over for putting such a great amount of time, energy, effort in this. And I would also like to point out that the Maryland State Department of Education often looks to Washington County Public Schools as a guide. Since this is a pilot program, I think we've taken the early lead, and we are maintaining that. And they look to us for program improvements and how to further the youth apprenticeship across the state.
It's worth noting that DM Bowman actually has three apprentices, which is the highest number in the state of Maryland for youth apprenticeships at this point. And each of these businesses that have met with our young people have been impressed by the ability of the students to present themselves well, to interview, and to be prepared for the job that they're being hired for. So, on the screen, you'll see some of the apprentice feedback. It's always interesting to talk to the students. In fact, that's how we continue to refine and revise our programming. When we talk to the students and ask them, were you prepared for your interview? Did you feel comfortable? Do you feel supported? What could we have done better? And when and where could we have provided that information? We have, one of our students, Casey, came back to serve on the Youth Apprenticeship Professional Advisory Committee. So, it's that back and forth that makes the program work for both the businesses, the apprentice, and hopefully meets the goals we have for continued workforce development.
So, future growth. This program, we are certainly looking for careers. We are looking for meaningful, high-level occupations that will allow students to get a career for the rest of their life. So, we hope to expand into some future career cluster areas, as you can see on the screen from where we're at now, away from sort of some of the more traditional fields that we're currently working with.
And with that, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
I think it's fair to say our apprenticeship program's come a long ways from the days of work release. We used to teach a one-credit class and then release students to work at McDonald's for three hours a day, and we would count them as a CTE contributor. So, the apprenticeship program is a far cry from that. Pretty much nationwide, a lot of people are working on apprenticeship as a model for educating children for the future. And I'm very proud of the work that our staff has done in helping to lead this pilot project and the opportunities we've provided to the students so far. Ms. Wendy Moore deserves a lot of credit. I generally get emails from her on Sunday of what's being posted and what's coming up for the week and things like that. Information she's sending out to counselors. But staff will be glad to respond to any questions the board has. We'll keep you updated on this.
Mrs. Newman? Do they have all of their high school credits before they join? No, so this...
It's really geared towards eleventh and twelfth grade. So, really, when the student first expresses interest in the industry, they really have no on-the-job training that is specific to a credential that they would need for that job. So, it's really just their first beginning experience, so eleventh grade.
Okay, I think I must have misrepresented. Do they have their high school credits? In other words, how do they obtain their graduation requirements and do their apprenticeship? That's what I was asking.
I see what you mean. Many of them actually, because we were pilot and they were willing to let us start late, most, many of them did summer hours. So, worked full-time jobs in the summer. They can also adjust their schedules, as Colleen White did. She went to her counselor, said, "I'm a senior, I've met all of my graduation requirements. I only need math and English." And I think she needed one other thing. How can we make myself available during the work hours? So, that's where the counselors are in. Critical need to analyze each student's schedule to see when and how we could make both possible.
It is, Dr. Michael mentioned that sometimes that there may be a chance that the student can leave school a little early after they finish taking the credits that are required for the graduation. And also, they work on weekends. So, they can gain their hours, and it's only four fifty, which seems like a lot, but really isn't once you start working through the program.
So, this program is for juniors and seniors. When do you start talking about it with freshmen and sophomore students? How does the word get out that this is a possibility?
We actually start talking about career in general in, well, earlier. But by plan is seventh grade, we do a career fair out at Hagerstown Community College and invite all of our industry and business partners and higher ed. That's the student's first exposure to the multiple careers we have. Eighth grade, we have the Maryland Business Roundtable. Comes and does in-class presentations about the various types of careers and the type of income you could find. And through last, was it last night? It was Thursday night's Professional Advisory Committee. We decided that we would like to look at ninth grade and tenth grade. Ninth grade, we do Naviance lessons through the guidance counselors. So, we want to be able to use that resource because it does house, students can start their own resume. They can start their own letter of interest, information in there. And then, in tenth grade, when we have life skills and health and life skills, we would like to go to the next step and have them actually practicing mock interviews. Because that was a piece that our students came back and said, you know, I could have used just a boost of confidence before I went in. Simple things like being able to Google the business and know a little bit about the business before you go in. So, we're going to try and build that into our tenth grade health-life skills so every student will have access.
And also, by word of mouth to the students, once they get into the program's building momentum and the kids are seeing other opportunities that, you know, the kids are going through. In fact, Brandon Hammond, his exit interview was powerful. I mean, it was so heartfelt, and he's got a career now. And he knows, he sees his pathway. He's going to open his own business in the apprenticeship path that he went through. And once we start putting that message out and getting that out and through videos and social media, that will gain attention.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, we'll move along here quickly, is our annual update of our enrollment and free and reduced meal information. These are very important numbers to us for funding purposes and also for long-term planning purposes. So, we have Mike Emlee and Chad Chriswell. So, with that, we'll turn it over quickly to Chad.
President Williams, members of the board, good evening. We're here this evening to present the annual student enrollment report from data collected on September twenty-eighth of this year, along with the free and reduced meal eligibility rate that was collected on October thirty-first of this year. This data is a little tentative, as it's still under review from the Maryland State Department of Education. But in discussions with our Student Services Department, they expect minor revisions, if any, to the data that we're presenting to you tonight. Taking a look at the enrollment changes as compared to September this time of last year, we look at the elementary level, and right about as we anticipated, we're down by about a hundred and sixty-five students. If you remember when Ms. Newman, our demographer, came and presented last April, she talked about rollover, and that's what we experienced at the elementary level. We had an exiting fifth-grade class of about eighteen-hundred-and-twenty students and incoming kindergarten class of around sixteen-hundred students, which resulted in that reduction. Now, we did see some in-migration in the other grades, which helped pull that number back up to only a hundred and sixty-five student reduction. On the flip side, we saw a rollover increase in our middle school level, where we increased, as we had anticipated, by about a hundred and fifty students. Where we saw that large eighteen-hundred-and-twenty class come into sixth grade, and we saw a smaller sixteen-hundred-student class exit eighth grade. At the high school level, we had about a reduction of around eighty-nine students compared to last year. And our special centers, we saw basically a flat enrollment. So, our K through twelve total, or our compensatory funding number that Dr. Michael had mentioned, we're down by about a hundred and eight students as compared to this time last year. And looking at our total enrollment, including pre-K, and obviously, since September of last year, we've added a large number of pre-K programs to our system, we're up by about two hundred pre-K students from where we were this time last year, which the net overall enrollment is an increase of around ninety students and represents the most students that this county has ever served in the public school facilities. One thing I'll just touch on with the K through twelve compensatory funding number, it's only a hundred and seventy-four students down from the highest K through twelve number that we've ever had here, and that was back in two thousand thirteen. So, that's showing that we're staying relatively flat with our enrollment. We're not seeing big swings of five hundred or three hundred students. We're keeping steady pace. And looking at a quick chart of total pre-K through twelve enrollment, you can see that, you know, between two thousand and two thousand and ten, we had a pretty steep slope, where we saw a lot of in-migration into this county. Since two thousand and ten until now, it's really kind of leveled off and staying flat, which is a sign of a healthy environment. But we're not seeing those big gains like we used to see. Makes it a little easier to plan and try to come up with the projections for the following year. Going to a macro level view of the, or excuse me, a micro level view of the elementary schools, of course, we anticipated being down. Of note here would be Eastern Elementary and Jonathan Hager Elementary, both saw an effect of a rollover, where they had a large exiting fifth-grade class. Eastern had a smaller incoming third-grade class from Ruth Ann Monroe Primary, which will be on the next page. And Jonathan Hager had a smaller incoming kindergarten class. Lincolnshire experienced a little bit of outmigration. The grades, as they might transition to the next grade, they tended to lose a few students. That's not uncommon for that facility. We've noticed that before, and it's something we'll continue to watch. Looking at the rest of the elementary schools, Morgansville was another recipient of the rollover, where it had a large exiting fifth grade and smaller incoming kindergarten. Ruth Ann Monroe Primary in Salem both saw large incoming kindergarten classes and small exiting fifth grades. So, while we saw a total reduction in our elementary facilities, those facilities actually saw an increase in the number of K through five students as compared to last year. At the middle school level, where we saw an increase, the two facilities that really kind of stand out are Northern Middle, they had a large incoming sixth-grade class, and Western Heights Middle. This is the first year where all three grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth, have the magnet program available. So, last year, they increased. We expected them to increase again this year. And this is the first year where they have a magnet program in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as it kind of progressed through. Looking at the high schools, last year during this presentation, I made the comment that Barbara Ingram's enrollment was the highest that we had ever recorded since two thousand nine. I think Principal Hubbard heard me because he increased it by one this year. So, it's the new highest that it's ever had since its opening. But all in all, the high schools stayed pretty close to what we had anticipated for the overall reduction of around eighty-nine students, which really was pretty flat. And then, the special centers, we always are around eighty to eighty-five students. And again, they stayed flat as well. At the end of the presentation, if there's any questions or anything specific, I'll be more than happy to answer. But now, I'm going to turn it over to Michael to go through the free and reduced meal studies.
We experienced about a one-tenth of a percent increase in our free and reduced number from last year. And just a couple of free things. We maximized our efforts this year by ensuring parents knew how to apply for those benefits, really pushing our online portal. It's the most efficient, quickest way to get the application in and approved. So, we really worked hard to make sure parents knew and understood that we had that service available, translated in many different languages. We use robo-calls as well as working with principals. On the thirty-day cutoff period, everybody gets a thirty-day grace period at the beginning of the school year. So, as we approached that cutoff, we were working with principals. We worked with our technology team to extract that data and send emails and phone calls to parents to really ensure that by the time we reach the October thirty-first date, that we've maximized our efforts. And with that, we'll go for questions.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you both. Thank you very much.
And last presentation is our quarterly update on employee healthcare. We've been trying to keep the board informed on our fund balance and claims. And Mr. Brandenburg and Tricia Rowley are here today to share a brief update.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Staff, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. As you know, we come to you from time to time and talk about the update on the self-insurance fund because we had problems a couple of years ago, and we have been clawing our way back from that deficit situation. So, we are making progress. We want to report that to you tonight. As you can see here, we're looking at the same, comparing the first quarter of this year to the first quarter of last year, same period, July through September. Revenue's up about three percent, but our claims are up about eight-point-six percent. So, we're watching that. That's a little more than we would have anticipated. It was a bit of a surprise. However, you can see that our net increase in fund balance is still a million dollars for the quarter. As we mentioned, we are purposely trying to run a surplus to build up that fund balance to the target. So, that positive, very positive net increase in fund balance is down about thirty-six percent from last year, but it's still a positive number, so we're still making progress. We are meeting with our consultant and Signa Tamar to discuss some of the reason for the increase in claims. So, we should be getting some more information on that. And October was a little bit better, but it's just something to keep an eye on. So, as a reminder, I think you received, in the audit report, we talked about the fact that our ending fund balance was six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. And then, our year-to-date excess so far for the first three months of this fiscal year is a million. And so, that brings us up to the fund balance today of one-point-seven. And Tricia's got a bit of a here.
Just briefly, our recommended fund balance is three million dollars, and we are funded currently at about fifty-seven percent at this time. A few items of interest. We are still in the midst of our claims audit that we mentioned at the last meeting. We are also still in process of putting out, reviewing the bids for the consultants.
We'll bring that to you on December eleventh.
Yes, a recommendation then. The Healthcare Committee has reviewed and recommend Signa's Healthcare Health Matters program, and that's for the board's consideration. I believe we'll discuss that in the December meeting. Are there any questions at this time?
Mr. Brandenburg, did you say we were clawing our way? Was that the word that I heard? I'm having difficulty with my reading.
We are, yes. Clawing our way back to the positive, into the positive territory for the fund balance, which is the right direction to go in.
And you're optimistic that we're making good progress with that fifty-six-point-seven percent?
I am. We had better-than-expected progress last year. And we didn't expect to get there in a year. We thought it would take two or three, and so, I think we're on track right now.
Great. Thank you both.
The conclusion of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Thanks, this is the Personnel Action. Dr. Pugh, you're handling that this evening?
Good evening again. I'm here to ask for approval of the staff changes discussed earlier in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. So, the motion is for approval of Personnel Action as discussed in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
And, Mrs. Williams, if I might, one staff change of interest this evening. Dr. Mike Kehanek was recommended and approved by the board to be the principal of Boonsport High School. So, very grateful to him for taking that position, and I know he's excited. And I hope the Boonsport community is equally as excited. So, congratulations to him.
I have some... I have some reports, under reports to the board. The first report is the FIAC, or the Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee, their progress report, or the new Sharpsburg attendance zone. So good evening again, welcome.
I am here with much, much better company than Mr. Emble, but hopefully he doesn't take offense of that. There's three bunches in there now. I am one of the Facility and Enrollment Advisory Committee co-chairs, Mrs. Jennifer Ashwell and Ms. Karen Kramer, to present a progress report to you tonight on the committee's work on the charge that was issued by the board on April 3rd to the committee to develop an attendance zone for the anticipated opening of the new Sharpsburg Elementary School and to provide enrollment relief to the adjacent elementary attendance zone. So since that time, this committee has been hard at work, they've met 5 times, they've considered 8 different proposals, they have refined that down to 3 that we will be presenting to you tonight. And as part of this progress report to the board, they have followed the school board policy, they reviewed all options against 2 enrollments, the enrollment from September 2017, which our current enrollment projections are based upon, and this year's tentative 2018 enrollment. Following suit with former Facility Enrollment Advisory Committees, they've used K through 5 enrollment information for the schools so they can provide very accurate and finite recommendations, especially with some of the changes that we've had with the pre-kindergarten programs throughout the county. They were able to keep working without being impacted by any of those changes. And looking at the attendance zones, you can see the current Sharpsburg Elementary Attendance Zone is the white area on the map, following it in a counterclockwise manner. The current Pleasant Valley Elementary Attendance Zone is the purple area, the Boonsborough Elementary Attendance Zone is the blue area, Rockland Woods to the north is the tan area, and the Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone is the green area. And we've indicated the location of the schools with yellow dot outlined in red. The current Sharpsburg Elementary School has a K through 5 state rated capacity of around 229 seats. The new school will open with 431 K through 5 seats, which means it has 222 seats more than what the current school currently has. As we looked at the enrollment at this facility in 2017, we were at 245 students. The tentative number, which is white and red, this year was 230 students, it matched up with our enrollment projections, nothing really out of the ordinary there. And based on that, we anticipate by 2021, if nothing changes, this school will have 184 seats available beyond what the projected enrollment is. As we started looking at the adjacent elementary attendant zones, we reviewed Boonsborough Elementary, of course. Last year they had enrollment of 533 students. This year they're up a little bit at 552 students, that is in line with the projections. Some of that's attributed to some special permissions that came into that school, or about 24 special permissions that helped increase that number this year a little bit above what we thought it might, but it's still in line with the projections. So right now in 2021, that school is expected to have a deficit of 110 seats, meaning there's 110 more students than there are seats available in the K through 5 levels. Moving on to Pleasant Valley Elementary School, the enrollment between last year and this year is pretty much the same. In 2021, they're anticipated to be, have a 20 student, 20-seat deficit in the number of K through 5 students. Moving on to Fountain Rock Elementary, this one was the one where we saw a little bit of a change. Last year they had 251 students, that was partly due to the last redistricting we did where we saw some areas of Williamsport and Lincolnshire coming through the area. We had expected this area to continue to grow in enrollment, and this year it came in a little, little smaller than what we were projecting. So in talking with the committee, we are anticipating when projections come back to the board this April, that we might see those out-year projections come down a little bit based on the kindergarten and some of the outmigration that this facility saw. However, using the projections that we have now, right now, it's anticipated that they will have a 14-seat deficit in 2021. Again, when we come back this spring, we might see that they might not have as much of a deficit, if any, based on some of the newer enrollment numbers. Finally, Rockland Woods Elementary, it came in this year pretty close to where it was last year. That development continues to build out, it's probably building out more than any other development in the county at the moment. We keep seeing climbs, and right now, we are expected to have 129 available seats in 2021, and we seem to think that's going to follow suit. So the baseline information that the committee looked at is pretty much summarized in this chart. Everything I just went through shows the anticipated seat deficit for seats available in 2021. Again, these are all K through 5 seats, putting pre-kindergarten at every facility. And from that, the committee garnished 3 preliminary recommendations that we're going to go through with you here tonight. The first would reassign approximately 9 K through 5 students from Boonsborough to Sharpsburg Elementary. This is an area that's just north of Shepherdstown Pike, 34. It includes portions of Hardwood Lane and Kaufman Farms Lane. And the little box that's to the right, one of the things that this committee did was they reviewed the 6th, the 7th year enrollment history of each proposal that they're presenting. So you can see that the 17 enrollment for this area had 9 K through 5 students. The tentative data that we pulled earlier this year from Student Services showed that there were 11 K through 5 students in this area. We anticipate the number in the final report to be very similar to that 11, but until we get it finalized from the State Department of Education, we're sewing it in yellow just as an indicator that it could go up or down by one or 2 students. But as you can see, the area generally has about 10 to 12 students in it for the past 7 years, so it's pretty static. Now we get to the map where you can see the current attendant zones, and you can see the arrow pointing to this area. As we zoom in, you'll see Shepherdstown Pike, the red line, and this area is just north of it, includes all of Kaufman Farms Lane and Hardwood Lane, portions of Shepherdstown Pike to the north. And as I show you the image map, you can see that it's a lot of farmland in this area. So this comprises of preliminary recommendation number 1. As we move to preliminary recommendation number 2, we will go just south of this area, and the easiest way to describe it is essentially is the town of Keediesville. This area had approximately 98 K through 5 students in it last year. This year it has, again, 98 K through 5 students. And it's pretty much held steady at around 100 K through 5 students for the past 6 years. You can see 1 year in 2012 where it had about 120, but again, it's a pretty static area as we look at it. And again, showing the map, you can see that it's south of Shepherdstown Pike. As we zoom in a little bit, excuse me, you can see that it is the entire town of Keediesville. And as we go to the Google map, if you look kind of in the center of the area, you can see, in this older photo, it shows the Stonecrest Development, which is being built out. There's about 6 permits remaining, I believe, based on our last discussion with the town. If you look at the southern portion, you can kind of see where Cannon Ridge Development is, it's right adjacent to the white of the existing Sharpsburg Elementary Attendance Zone. And then if you look up towards the top, you can see one little parking lot, that's Bonnie's at Redbird. It's a great breakfast there, I like to go. Always equated the food when I can, so it helps me remember things. The third and final recommendation that the committee asked me to bring forward to the board tonight is the reassignment of 9 K through 5 Pleasant Valley Elementary students to Sharpsburg Elementary. This is the westernmost portion of the existing Pleasant Valley Elementary Attendance Zone. This area's been pretty static, they've created around 20 students or so for the past 4 or 5 years. At one point in time, it had 30 coupled, but again, for the past few, it's been pretty static. This includes the Kaufman Farm, or excuse me, the Chestnut Grove Road as it comes north, I have to get it zoom in a little bit. It goes up to the Nikel Turnaround, and I'm going to go back a slide. This recommendation originally came forth from our Transportation Department. So as the committee worked, all the departments came and met with the committee and gave them their input and insight for various proposals that were reviewed. And the Transportation Department noted that currently, students in this area have to travel north on either Chestnut Grove Road or Trigo Mountain Road, then to come south on Roarsville Road down to Pleasant Valley Elementary. They indicated with this particular change, a bus could turn around at Nick Road Turnaround, come south just a little bit, and then pick up Harpers Ferry Road to come right up to Sharpsburg. Might actually be a little bit shorter of a commute for the children, it might offer some efficiencies to our Transportation Department as well in future buses and/or routing. So that was one of the considerations that the committee looked at. Again, as I zoom in here, you can see that this is kind of the top of the mountain range and is representative of about 20 students that would be coming from Pleasant Valley to Sharpsburg Elementary based on the current enrollment in that area. So going back to the baseline information that the committee started with, with these 3 recommendations, it ends up moving around 107 students from Boonsborough Elementary over to Sharpsburg Elementary and puts them right at capacity in 2021, assuming that the projections hold true. This assumes that the King Road Development takes off. If it doesn't take off, we might see those projections come down a little bit. We, of course, the only active development in Boonsborough at the moment is the Sycamore Run Development, which has about 15 homes yet to build. So we're not anticipating any major development in that area until we see some of the larger developments take off, which would be the TT and K or the King Road Development where they have about 1,000 sewer taps. And then Pleasant Valley would come right to its capacity at around 210 students or so. It fills Sharpsburg up to right around its local rated capacity of 90%. And again, that assumes we don't see any growth in Sharpsburg or anybody coming through the area for the new school, which we did experience at Bestrow Elementary a few years ago when we opened that school in an existing neighborhood, and all of a sudden, we saw an increased enrollment because of the new school that was being constructed there. And looking at the impact to the free and reduced meal students, the committee, when they last met, they only had last year's information, they didn't have the information that we just presented a couple of minutes ago. You can see that the impact is really minimal, it's within average changes, we would see a slight decrease at Sharpsburg, but there's really no major impact, and that would be spelled out in the final report that would come to the board. So looking at the current attendant zones, this was the map we showed at the start, and the 3 recommendations that the committee wanted to share with the board tonight are shown as how much it would add, and of course, we've already shown what it would create as far as an impact to the facilities in 2021. From this, it is the hope of the committee that they can take any comments that they received from you tonight, take it back to a meeting, reconsider those comments, come up with final recommendations, and perform a vote. And then the goal is to bring a final report to the board here in February of this year, the latest to give you time to consider and move forward with your process. And with that, we are open to questions, and I say we, I have the committee co-chairs here, which will probably be doing the majority of the talking at this point.
Question?
I don't have a question, I'd just like to thank the committee. I was able to sit in one of the meetings, and they are very involved, very knowledge in this process. I think their leadership, Karen and Jennifer both have done a wonderful job, Chad leading that charge. I want to just please take it back and thank the committee for what they've done. I mean, it's a lot of extra work, and it's not just popping in and popping out, it was very drawn out, a lot of good dialogue went on that evening, so thank you very much to all the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vic. Anyone else? Mr. Gessford?
Thank you, co-chairs, for your service, very appreciative. Look forward to your report in February, did you say?
That is our goal, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gessford. Board member committee reports. Start with the Curriculum Instruction Committee, Mrs. Murray.
Instruction will meet on November 27th here in the board conference room at 10:30 a.m.
Gessford, Facilities?
Yes, Facilities had most recently met, and we did go over the FIAC report, and at this time, I don't think we have another scheduled meeting, but if one comes up, we will have it put on board docs.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee at our last meeting had a lengthy discussion about OPEB, the famous Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, and ways that we can work on that as we look at our obligations to our retirees. We plan to have our next meeting on November 27th at 8 a.m. in the operations conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Vicford. Mr. Ridner, Human Resources?
Meeting in January.
Mrs. Fisher, Policy Review and Development?
Policy review met yesterday. We reviewed board advisory committees and board members' standing committees, and we will be working to update these in a future meeting. There are some new state laws that are necessitating updates to our policies and regulations on child abuse and neglect, and also on bullying, harassment, and intimidation, so we will need to update those policies to meet those regulations. We also reviewed the new state laws in preparation for making those changes. Mr. Trotta then updated the committee on the accomplishments that have been made thus far, on the requirements of the Safe to Learn Act. Many staff members have put in a lot of time working on that, and we do have another set coming up in 2019 that will need to be met as well. Finally, I provided a handout on equity in preparation for some future policy requirements on that topic. It will probably be a policy not coming out until next year sometime, as there is a lot of work to be done at MAE and State on that first. Our next meeting is November 29th at 9:15 in the adjacent meeting room.
Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Mackley, anything student over there?
Yeah, the Washington County Association of Student Councils will be having our next meeting November 27th at the Boonsborough campus. Will be featuring taste testing by the Food and Nutrition Department here, and they'll be doing that in coordination with the Hospitality and Tourism Program at North Huggers Town High School. So we're looking forward to that. I bet. 9 to 1 o'clock.
Thank you. Breakfast and lunch.
Be there.
Provide food and they will be there. Thank you, Mr. Mackley. Okay, that brings us to miscellaneous business, consideration of future agenda items. Add in your packet a list of agenda items moving forward. Coming up on December 4th, we have our swearing-in ceremony for our 3 newly elected board members, and December is looking to be quite a busy month for us, we have many things going forward. Coming up on December 11th, we have a student achievement report where we will be hearing information presented about ACT and SAT data. And another interesting report, I'm sure, will be the Chromebook Pilot Program from North High coming up on December 11th. So if you have any suggestions for future agenda items, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know so that we can get them on the agenda for you. That brings us to board member comments. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin down there?
No comments.
You have no comments? Mrs. Murray?
I have none, thank you.
No comments. Mr. Vicford?
Me.
None for you? Mr. Stauffer?
None.
No? Mr. Gessford?
I have a few.
All right.
Sorry, guys. Yesterday, I was board member Murray, and I attended the ceremony for Veterans Day up in Clear Spring, and it was absolutely wonderful. It was a wonderful program. I know there's a few other schools around, I think there's one tomorrow, actually, at Atomic Heights, so encourage anyone who wants to attend that, I got an invitation, so I don't know if you all got that, that's tomorrow. Like to thank all of our vets who are employees, including our own board member Stauffer, Mr. Stauffer, who was a vet, we thank you for our service. As Thanksgiving is coming up upon us, I'd like to wish all of our staff and their families a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that they have a wonderful time with their families. with the, working with the rest of the board over the next four years, along with our staff and superintendent. I did have an email about committees, and I just want to remind folks, if they're interested in any of the committees, like the FEAC Committee, to go to our board website. That does provide you the opportunity to sign up for different committees. We do have some really good committees that are coming up, and we hope that you would involve yourself in our school system by being a part of the committee. So thank you very much, and that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mrs. Fisher?
Well, I believe Mr. Gessford took care of just about everything.
All right. Mr. Ridenour, nothing for you? And I have nothing. So with that, I say we stand adjourned. Thank you. Clean up your mess.